We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed with your call?
Trustee Dory here. Trustee Humphries?
Here.
Trustee Kritiya?
Here.
Trustee Neber, we'll not be in attendance tonight. Your trustees, Lea?
Here.
President, you're on.
Here. All right, on behalf of the trustees, I'd like to welcome all of you to our meeting and thank you for your interest in the library. Item number four is the approval of our April 26, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, as well as our regular meeting minutes from that same date.
I will move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented, as well as the second. You can go ahead and proceed with a vote, voiced vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And all those abstaining? All right, the meetings have, the minutes have been approved. Item number five is financial matters, including April 2023 financial report, as well as the May 2023 invoices.
And you all should have received those last couple of items that were not in the original board packet. That packet will be appended on our website. We, the village, did not get the fund balances to us on time, and there was a delay in getting statistics. On the financials, we are thirty-three percent of the way through 2023 as of the end of April. As you, our fund balances are negative, as are, as if, as expected this time of year. As you know, as the trustees know, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the village of Downers Grove that allows us to go into arrears while we are awaiting our tax numbers. The village of Downers Grove covers that at no cost to the library. Our revenues are running at 1.9% also, as expected this time of year. As you know, most of our money is property tax-based, so we get most of that in June and September. So you usually see that posted to our financials in July and October. We did receive the award letter for our Illinois Public Library Annual Per-Capita Grant that is fully funded at the amount that was budgeted for the year. So we anticipate getting that before the end of the fiscal, so that should be great. And then, on the expense side, we're on track in nearly all budget lines. Please keep an eye on fifty-four, five thousand. That is the cleaning services line. And remember that due to the issue with our cleaning company contract and finding a new company, that we will be going over in that line. But the new cleaning company is doing excellent, and we're really happy with their work.
Is the new company Complete Cleaning Company?
Yes, okay. Complete Cleaning is the new company, and they have been doing a really great job. And they put, they have a larger crew, they're here for longer, so we're very happy with them. And that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Final kind of tally against the worker motivations? How did that come into the budget?
Oh, yeah, at the last, yeah, we were forty-three thousand under budget, and that's, all of the invoices have not been approved, but they, all of the, all of those things have been accepted, so we already, we were just waiting to get all those payments actually out, but we, we know what our final numbers are.
So we'll see those next time?
So you have, I believe it's three of the final invoices. I think that's it, but there might be a straggler or two out there, particularly for those last couple of furnishings that you might forget.
I move that we approve the, the invoices and payrolls as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the financial matters as presented. Caitlin, proceed with your call.
Trustee Dory?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kritiya?
Yes.
Trustees, Lea?
Yes.
President, you're on.
Yes. All right, those have been approved. Item number six is public comment on agenda items. Any public comment related to any items that are on the agenda, and as a reminder, we limit each comment to five minutes. All right, public comments on other library business.
Eileen Brainerd, Downers Grove, good evening. I ask again for an update tonight as to the personnel matter that the library has hired an attorney for. What stage is it in? Investigation, litigation, arbitration, or settlement? I'd like to know. Secondly, Julie, in your letter to the community on the website, under DEI, you state that, quote, "By openly condemning hate and violence, the library demonstrates that it is a safe place for people of color and people who look or think or act differently." The term "people of color" sounds inclusive, but, because basically, we all have color. White's a color. It's a combination of all primary colors. But alas, "people of color" is a work term, woke term, to refer to everyone except white-skinned colored people. I find it strange to fight racism with a segregating term like "people of color." How do you fight racism with a new racism? You should be uniting us all under the banner of our humanity. We all belong to the human race. Our dignity is derived from our humanity. We're all the same on the inside. Stop focusing on the outside. You said, "By openly condemning hate and violence," you make it sound as if Downers Grove is full of hate and violence. Downers Grove is better than that. Your statement does not make the library safe. Making sure that drugs are not being ingested and sold from the premises makes the library safe. Ejecting persons who fight in the library and threaten violence in the library makes us safe. I think you should be more focused on safety of all patrons and employees at the library, regardless of what cul, of what group they belong to. The next time I see POC in the library communication, I hope that it will be referring to piece of cake or point of contact. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ian Wick. I just wanted to express my appreciation to the board and library staff for the outstanding programming you've brought to our community. I thoroughly enjoyed the wide-ranging programs you provided, as has my family. I'd like to share a bit about how one of your programs, the Potawatomi, touched me and members of the extended family. Our family oral history includes my great, great, great grandmother, when in the early eighteen hundreds, was one of the first settlers of European descent in the Northwest Territory, which is northeast Indiana. She ended up alone with three young sons and some seed potatoes. The local Native Americans brought them food and supplies and helped sustain them throughout the winter. Local neighbors, it was doubtful she and her sons would have survived without their assistance. After watching your program, I wondered if perhaps the Native Americans were Potawatomi. I did some research, and yes, they were Potawatomi, who were removed from their lands and sent to what is now Kansas on the Trail of Death. They were later moved to Oklahoma, where they currently reside, the Citizen Potawatomi Nation, people of the place of fire. I reached out to their tribal vice chairman, Linda Cabs, with my family's story, and we had a lovely conversation. I later received a call from Kelly Mossdeller, executive director of the Harvard University Native American Program, and enrolled citizen of the Citizen Potawatomi Nation in Shawnee, Oklahoma. I was able to express my family's profound gratitude to their ancestors for their kindness, kindness and generosity to a degree ago. I was also able to learn more about their past and current challenges, as well as the work they're undertaking to overcome those challenges. I have an open invitation to visit and greatly appreciated the connection we were able to make. I believe your programs impact people in so many positive, but often hidden ways, and I wanted to share one small example. So thank you. Also, I want to bring this up. My daughter was in Boston this past weekend at a Taylor Swift concert. So they were waiting in line, in the rain, to get in. People were discussing how far they traveled to see Taylor Swift. My daughter mentioned that she was from a Chicago suburb, Downers Grove. Someone in the crowd said, "Oh, I've heard of Downers Grove. You have that really great library." But I wanted you to know that your work is being positively recognized throughout. So I'm very excited.
I'm here to speak to you about the treatment of forty shelters and clerks that work here in the circulation department. They were allowed to swap hours for more than ten years. In fact, probably days, we could probably even say no longer. But, and the reason behind this, that they were given set hours every week, and their weekend schedule is made a year in advance. Who knows what days you will need off that far in advance? Most of us don't know what we're doing in two months, let alone a year. There is, right now, no ability to swap unless you use all of your personal time or your vacation time. And the administration, like I said, has decided that it's inconvenient for them to allow switching, unless, like I said, all personal time and vacation time are used. Again, you get three personal days for the year, and each employee is given vacation, either two weeks or more, depending on how many years. And they should be using that at their discretion, not, because maybe they have a flat tire or something. Vacation should be used for vacation, and you never know what little things life will throw at you. This is causing people to use sick time instead, and they're calling off. It is, it's not a good thing to use your sick time for those things. Many times, they are not being replaced, and therefore puts more pressure on the people who are behind. With the department's goal being to emphasize good mental health and taking care of yourself, this seems like just talk. If they truly cared about the people in the department, this policy would not have been changed. There should be a better solution. I realize that scheduling is not an easy task, but because it is complicated, and maybe the person who's doing it doesn't really like to do it, maybe they need to find a person who would be able to get the job done properly. Many employees have communicated that they are displeased with this change, but they're afraid to voice their opinion because of retaliation, which should never happen in the workplace. This is wrong, and when someone's rights are taken away in that manner. Things to remember: these jobs are sixteen to eighteen hours set, scheduled, per week. Weekend schedule is made a year in advance. Personal time should be used for personal time. Vacation should be used for vacation. It is a time to recharge. Each individual should have that opportunity. And sick time should be used for sick time. You never know what's going to happen when you walk out that door. It is up to you as a board to make this right. Switches should be put back. Do the right thing and give forty employees their right to switch back. I am sure that the administration will have excuses on why not to do this, but the average person finds this a vital necessity. Thank you.
Well, Julie, I helped organize the painting of the library windows to honor Memorial Day, something that should not have been controversial. Painting the library windows to remember, as Abraham Lincoln stated in the Deshberg Address, "That from these honored dead, we take increased devotion to that cause for which they gave the last full measure of devotion," termed controversial. Controversy began with an email I received giving me permission to paint the windows. Jen Rejuski stated the following: "You'll be able to paint the library windows for Memorial Day. This is the first time that the library windows will be painted by an individual, rather than part of the community or downtown event, other businesses or organizations participating, like Halloween or Pride Month." As our beta test for window painting beyond these larger community events, the library will use this to evaluate how, in win, it approves such requests, should there be more in the future. First, in Jen's email, she makes it clear that Halloween and Pride Month will not be beta-tested, but Memorial Day will be. She made it clear that Memorial Day is not on the same level as Halloween and Pride Month, as a community event, when she said it would be beta-tested, and the library would evaluate how, in win, it approves such requests, should there be more in the future. How appalling. That Jen and Julie demand a beta test for Memorial Day, a day that is far more significant than Halloween and Pride Day. Second, it was not an individual who painted the windows, it was seventeen young students and six adults who assisted in the painting of the windows. I also had to submit what would be painted on the windows. That was a reasonable request, and I complied. Three days after the students painted the windows, I received an email from Jen. I thought the email was to thank the students, to recognize their effort. I was wrong. I was taken aback by her email. Her email stated the following: "I noticed that the quote on our window is slightly different from the text you submitted to me, and that the word 'God' is capitalized on our windows. This is not what you submitted to me in writing and will be corrected." So her whole reason for changing the word "God" was based on what was written on the window. It was not exactly the same as what was submitted in the email. In my response email to Jen, I asked why the decorations were not removed from the window, because they were not submitted in my email to her. So based on her reasoning, the decoration should have been removed, but they were not. In her email, she avoided answering the question. Also, Jen said that she noticed that what was written on the window was not exactly the same as what was submitted by that email. When I questioned Jen if she actually read the quote to make sure it matched word for word, or if someone complained, Jen again tried to avoid the question. Finally, Jen admitted to the truth, that the change was made to the word "God" because a patron demanded that the word be corrected. So Jen lied to me as to the reason why the word "God" was changed. Instead of taking the pride in what the students did, their painting of the windows, and focusing on the message and the importance of Memorial Day, a bitter, angry, and narrow-minded individual demanded that the library make the change to the word "God." How different Jen and Julie's response was to a single patron demanding a change to the window and the whole drag queen fiasco. Julie, in her email to the community, was adamant that the drag queen event would occur, regardless of the opinion of the community, but when one person complained about a petty matter, Julie and Jen jumped into action. Shame on Jen and Julie for not educating the person to appreciate the overall beauty of the Memorial Day message and the work that the students performed. Instead, Jen and Julie got entangled up in a web of deceit, denials, and dishonesty. Jen and Julie bowed to the petition, to, I'm sorry, bowed to the pettiness of a patron. When you compare how they handled the Memorial Day window painting to the drag queen, then it's quite evident that Jen and Julie were by god's standards.
My name's Ed Brainerd, longtime resident of Downers Grove. The Downers Grove Library is not safe for children. Our library is open to individuals with alcohol, drug, possible mental issues. The library is not an alcohol, drug rehab center or mental facility. The library is not helping these individuals by just allowing them to hang out all day long with nothing to do. Sadly, there are no overt signs that the library has done anything about this situation, since I brought this up during the November board meeting. Since then, November 2022 through April, there have been disturbed, a disturbing number of calls from the library to the Downers Grove Police Department that the police were needed. Here are a few incident reports. I'll just review four. There are quite a few more. Infraction: open possession using, under the influence of a controlled substance. And this first call came from the kids', children's room, that there was a grown man, individual staggering through the shelves of the kids' room. He was drunk, obviously, but he was there, who knows? But certainly not safe for kids. Secondly, another open possession using, under the influence of a controlled substance, not following reasonable directions from the staff, interfering with another person's comfort and safety. Thirdly, early one morning, an individual, a woman, was found in the northwest garden playing in the dirt and acting strangely. Four-thirty, same day, same woman, again outside in the garden, digging and covered with dirt. Fourth, an infraction: viewing pornographic videos and trespassing. History of inappropriate conduct in the Downers Grove Public Library. The Downers Grove Library is a ticking time bomb. When one of these individuals might have an alcohol, drug, mental episode, they could injure a child, preteen, or a mother with her baby or babies that are often in here in the morning. The library is a great resource to Downers, if, I say if, it's a safe environment. Currently, this is not so. Julie, if you want to help these individuals, you should be offering these programs, services, resources, working with the mayor of DuPage County, to help these folks with their addictions and/or mental issues. Your number-one responsibility is running the library, is to make it a safe place, not a place that's enter at your own risk. We would like you to address this situation tonight. Certainly, your directors, gentlemen, let us know what you're doing and are planning to do to ensure safety in the library.
Hi, my name's Warner Keen, resident of Downers Grove. And what I'd like to address tonight is the true issue of divisiveness that we have truly seen in some of the discussions here in the library. We've spoken about people of color, we've spoken about the LGBT community, and whether or not you should have books about that on the shelves, we've talked about the Bible, et cetera, et cetera. And what concerned me is, in the last meeting, someone made reference to the dumbing-down overruns, because they weren't adhering to a lot of the white students. What I would encourage people to do in terms of the diversity, Downers Grove, I have found, this is not, excuse me, I'm nervous, is not a highly accepting community. People of color do not feel welcome here. And there is a lot that we can see, even in the comments, that occurred tonight. Well, one of the issues that is also raised about mental health, I spent forty years working in mental health. DuPage County, why I would not give a five-star rating for mental health, there are a lot of lacking services. And because the people are homeless, because the people are in need of places to stay during the day, because the shelters are shut down, they come to the library. If we are concerned, we need to develop a dialogue among the people here sitting in the audience, not you guys, and talk about how we're going to resolve this stuff. And by pointing at you and saying, "How awful it is, your programs and so forth, does not do anything. It is our job here to fix it, not yours." We need to work with the DuPage County government in terms of mental health issues, we need to work with DuPage in terms of homelessness, food pantries, and also a welcoming community. What I would do is welcome anyone who's sitting in this audience to get together and let us resolve the issue, and not focus in on the work continuously. Thank you.
Do you have any more comments? All right, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to move that we move up the summer reading and kids' room presentation with Allison up before our meeting business, so I'd like to make that motion. A motion and a second to move Allison's present, presentation up. For all, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? All right, you're up, Allison.
Hello, hi, I'm Allison. I am the Children's Services Manager here at Downers Grove Public Library, and happy summer reading. The summer reading program started on Monday. If you have not yet been to the kids' room, I highly, highly, highly encourage you to please stop by after the meeting or sometime this week, because my staff have really outdone themselves this year on our decorations. Our theme this year is Dive Into a Great Story, and so we have an underwater ocean theme throughout the entire kids' room, and I can tell you, almost everything in there is completely handmade by kids' room staff, and they are just phenomenal. Then there are also some great decorations from the circulation department that don't team services department, but of course, I'm going to do my best for it. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about summer reading, I'm going to pass around a few things for you guys. Like I said, it is Dive Into a Great Story. The club is very similar to how it has been the last few years. Let's start here. We have four clubs, one for Read To Me, which is for children from birth through entering kindergarten, the Readers Program, which is entering first grade through eighth grade, the Team Program, which is entering seventh grade through entering twelfth grade. Yes, there is some overlap there. The seventh and eighth groups get to choose which one they want to be in. And then there is the Adult Program as well. And so what I just passed to you all were the forms for the Adult Program. The Adult Program, I'm starting to go backwards, usually I start with the little kids, we're going to go backwards, we'll start with the adults first. So the Adult Program, you can either choose to read three books or six, no, that's eighteen hours, right? This is the eighteen-hour back rule. The beautiful lot on the back. And you can also keep, by the way, you can keep track of this on ReadToMe, which is our online platform as well. And then once you figure out, finish either three books or eighteen hours of time, you get to come to the library and get your prizes, which, because this year is going to be a book of choice, so a book that you can take home and keep. There's going to be a choice of a theme, sticker, magnet, bookmark, that type of thing. I'm going to pass these around to you guys, too, and if you want to keep them, you're welcome to. We have these adorable, cute little pins this year, and then we have some adorable, cute little magnets and stickers this year. cute little magnets and stickers this year. And then you'll also receive a enter for raffle, for one of our raffle baskets. If you want to keep reading beyond that during the summer, because, I mean, for me, I can finish three weeks, three books in like three weeks, so if you're like that, if you read like that, you can keep entering more and more and more raffle tickets throughout the summer for adults. The Teen Program is very similar, except it is three books or six hours worth of reading, and the surprises, I would say, is the book to choose as well as these magnets, stickers, and that type of stuff there. The Readers Program is also, yeah, this is for kids who are either entering seventh through, or entering first through eighth grade, and for their program, they can choose to either read six books or six hours, whichever they're doing. So if they're reading a longer book, we recommend doing the time. If they're reading a shorter book, we recommend doing a little bit, you know, doing the book on whichever they want to do. For their first prize, they get coupons for ice cream from Every Day's a Sunday. Every Day's a Sunday has been a longtime partner with us, and they give us discounted passes for ice cream, and it is always a favorite prize because everybody loves ice cream. Our second prize, which I brought you all one of these, we need to keep them, is a flingable shark.
Are these ones like sticks to the wall?
No, I'm not sure. Because we end up thinking, okay, let's not. And you hit the wall, right? Sometimes it sticks to the wall for a minute and then it lets that overhead that way. So that is prize number two. And then prize number three, you get a, they get a book to take home, and then they also get a variety of coupons for other activities, food, stuff like that around Downers Grove. We have a lot of sponsors like we do every year, they will all be listed on our website soon because they're actually still coming in, but that's gonna be great for the readers. And then they also continue reading after that if they want to. For raffle tickets, order points for our prize machines. For our littlest ones, which is our Read To Me Program, when the little kids read to, the parents read to the children, they get, their first prize is also ice cream. Their second prize are a variety of cute beach balls this year. This one happens to have sharks on them, but there are also ones that have other types of designs and stuff like that. I'm just really feeling the sharks tonight. And then their third prize is also a book to take home in one of those coupon packets, and they continue reading bonuses, so. So it hasn't changed too much from last year, but we have had very good, very good success last year. If you remember from your board reports in the fall, we were almost at our 2019 levels. And based on how our programming has been going so far this spring, we do expect to do at least that well, if not better, this summer, which I'll talk a little bit more on when I switch to my department report in a minute as well. So that's the summer reading part of the reading, but I did want to talk a little bit about the downtown scavenger hunt as well. This is the third year, I believe, that PR is doing, the Public or Marketing and Communications Department is doing. So this is our downtown business scavenger hunt. Last year it was some mores, this year it is adorable sea creatures. We have all the businesses that are participating are on the side here, over twenty businesses are participating. In their window, they will have one of these cute sea creatures, and the idea of the scavenger hunt is that you can go around and find, write down the name of the businesses, turn it back in to receive a raffle for a prize, and the raffles are, the adult, three adult slash teen winners will receive fifty-dollar downtown dollar gift certificate, five kid winners will receive a ten-dollar gift certificate, and a book bundle. And so it's gonna, this goes all the way from starting this last Monday through August sixth, which is the end of the club. They're very excited about it. Here's some of the cute little signs what they look like, and they just look really great this year, and we are very, very excited. In addition to our summer reading program, we also have our same partnership with District Fifty-Eight's PTA, where we are hosting their math club prize pickup, which is something about a relationship we've had for many years, it happens here in this room, Monday, Tuesday, three times a year, where the kids get to fill out their math forms, come in here, get their prizes, and a lot of times they come and do their reading at the same time. District Fifty-Eight does push our program as the reading program that their students should be doing over the summer. In anticipation for summer reading, the kids revisited all of the District Fifty-Eight schools as well as several of our local private parochial schools, and we have also been dropping off forms at daycares, preschools, all that type of stuff as well, so we're really excited. We also have a special program for daycare, so if they choose to participate in their classrooms over the summer, they can read as a group, and we're really excited because almost everybody has signed up for that so far. So any questions about summer reading this year?
I'd say that I love the tween teen volunteering aspect of it. Both my girls signed up, they're so excited to get to help kids enter in their information room. I love, I love that you're including the bigger kids in that, in that way.
Thank you so much for reminding me. We actually, as of tonight, have eighty-one summer volunteers, which is since two thousand nineteen, our record, and from two thousand nineteen was seventy-four. We have eighty-one, so we've beat our record, which we're very excited about. And so these students are, these kids are working the prize desk in the kids' department, and they are also working the prize desk in the adult teen department, too, because we were very lucky that we have such a good turnout that they get to come in and do that for us. So we are super excited, and we're really glad that they're glad to come back, and they always love helping out with the kids. And when we would push that in the sixth grade classrooms, they have very, they always turn up, we're like, oh, I can volunteer, so we're very excited about that, too. So thank you for reminding me. Any other questions or comments about summer reading? Okay, cool. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about what the kids' room has been up to during the last year since I last saw you. So the last summer, as I said in the summer reading report, last year we had really great numbers, we were almost back at our 2019 numbers, we had really great outreach numbers, and everything was going very well during our summer. We did have two long-term staff retirements in the summer, which was very sad, but, you know, we got to bring in some new staff after that, too, as well. So we spent a lot of the fall doing lots of retiring and training. And then the other project that, of course, took up most of our fall and our winter would be our workroom renovation, which, before I even get into that, I would like to say thank you so much from me and my department. I know you got to tour it before we renovated, and I know you've seen it after we renovated, and it is just such a life changer for us. All of my staff actually have adequate place to work now, we have adequate space to store, we have been able to pull our storage that we have been hiding in various parts of the rest of the building and move it down into our space. Those decorations probably would not have been possible without having the room that we have in there now to actually make things. And that also means with being able to do the crap work that goes into so much of our programming. So we are so excited, it's just absolutely wonderful, and we do still have some room to grow into it. We didn't use everything up, too, which is also all very exciting. And that also kind of brings me closer to programming. So with the workroom renovations, we did have to make some different adjustments to programming throughout the winter and early spring, particularly when we were in here, we were doing our storytimes in the STEM room, so we were a little bit less than we normally do, and we had to back off on some of our regular programming. However, starting in March of 2023, we were able to move back into our programming and kick our, all of our programming back into swing of things, because it always has our programming kicked back off. So when we started storytime again during the spring session, when we had all of our, all of our sessions, which was our baby storytimes, our toddler storytimes, and our open storytimes, we were looking at attendances of anywhere from forty to seventy-five people at storytime, which is great. Those are definitely pre-pandemic level numbers for us, and we were just so excited about that. All rest of our program attendance has been really well, too. We have people in the library all the time on the weekends, you can definitely tell, we are packed, full of parents and children. And in the mornings before noon, it'd be tough to find a seat in the kids' room if you weren't already there with your stroller and your kids, so we're just very excited about that. In addition, we are still doing our Make and Create Program on Monday afternoons. Mondays is when District Fifty-Eight lets off early, and so we have a hour program from two-thirty to three-thirty that's specifically for kids after school. That has been exceeding increased growth, too. We did shrinkedings this last Monday, and I think we had at least fifteen in there, they can come in and out, it's kids only, no adults, you know, parents can go stay outside, and it's just been a really cool club and community for kids to be in. And so for the summer, we are definitely back to our full slate of programming. We have storytimes. In the spring, we had nine storytimes a week. We go down to four storytimes a week during the summer because we need to open up our morning hours for elementary school kids and middle school kids to also have opportunities. We do have something coming on almost every day in the kids' room. We are doing programs at Fischel Park again this summer in our partnership with the Park District, and we are going to be doing big programs in here again, which is not something we've been able to do a lot of. So that's things like magicians and musicians and animal shows and all those things that we really did not get to do when we had restrictions on crowd size. We're gonna do all that back this summer, too, so we are very, very excited for that. My staff are very excited, we've just been, been a lot of creativity and excitement in the kids' room lately. Another thing that has really just grown this year is our outreach. I think I told you last year that we did about, from preschools and daycares, we had about seven different locations, we took off about eighty-seven classrooms. This year, we have doubled how many preschools we go to, we go to fourteen. We actually go to every preschool or daycare that is not school or like church affiliated in Downers Grove, so we do all the candor cares, the tutor times, all of those independent ones, including the newest one, which is Guide Post Montessori. We go to all of those every month during the school year, and most of them all sign up for us to go again this summer. And we just started up to give a bright horizons, which is so fantastic for us. And that's just the school and church affiliated ones. We also go to District Fifty-Eight's preschool, we go to St. Mary's preschool, we go to First United, and that's a, no, First Congregational Preschool, sorry about that, that does mix up for a second. So those have just really taken off. So we have, for the two thousand twenty-two to twenty-two thousand twenty-three school year, we saw eleven thousand children in our outreach events, which was just phenomenal. For our 2022 total, which was January through this year, we hit about twenty-seven hundred, we were just under thirteen thousand, which, when we were in our outreach coordinator was just like, oh, we're so close. But we're actually already about almost eight thousand so far, just this May, so we are just really pushing along with outreach. We also did classroom visits at about half of the District Fifty-Eight schools, we also did them at Avery Coonley, we did, we also did some things with St. Mary's and St. Joe's as well, with their teachers. Something that we did this year, which was huge, was we do lots of book pools for teachers, so like teachers or librarians can email us about a topic or a specific type of genre of books that they want. We will pull them for them, check it out for them on their institute card, and then they can come pick it up, sometimes we jump it off, too. And we did that with eleven different schools this year, including several Fifty-Eight schools and then St. Joe's, St. Mary's, and Avery Coonley. So we're really excited about that. Let's see, we did so many school classroom visits this day, everything from book talks to coding, community days, sharing that to judge, Woody Earth Convention Fair, which was really awesome. So just a lot of really great time for my staff and to be out into the community. We also have a variety of groups who can visit the library, Girls Got Truth, Boys Got Truth. I just did merit badge presentation last week, as well as a variety of other outside organizations. And then we did adult presentations this year, too. We do a professional development for our annual Lutheran's preschool because my staff and I are early literacy experts, and so that is something that we can offer people who work in early childhood, is additional professional development in early literacy or early child, other early childhood topics. And then we present, we presented at the New Teacher Luncheon every year for Fifty-Eight. I just presented the BI PAC group for Fifty-Eight last week as well, which is their Dual Language Program Parents Association. So we really are on Fifty-Eight's radar. They invite us to everything, and we go to everything as much as we can, which has just been absolutely awesome. And then one of the things that we have been able to do this year, which we've been doing for a long time, is that when we withdraw us from the collection, like our summer bibliographies or any books that are still in good shape, but we just don't have room for on our shelf, we do give those books away to our local partners. And so this year, we gave away twenty-nine boxes, or fifty-nine boxes to twenty-eight different schools and preschools, that, something like that, that doesn't make sense. Those numbers are wrong, we're learning now, but it was really great. So we give things, everything from like West River and Community Pantry to the school libraries in Fifty-Eight, we gave extra books to tutor times, so we just want to make sure that these books have a life after we are done with them and to go to children in the community to benefit from them. And so, yeah, outreach has just been a phenomenal project for us this year. And as I mentioned, we have those thirteen schools, and almost all of them are continuing into the summer with us, so that's why we expect to see a drop in our outreach, summer reading participation as well. Another big project that we have been working on this year, as I told all of you last year about our J. Fiction Diversity Audit, we did, this year we did our, the audit of our summer bibliography list, and we audited our storytime collection. Our summer bibliographies are the books that we put out in the lobby every summer, they're for first through second, coming in fourth section, first through second graders, third through fourth graders, fifth through sixth graders, and seventh, eighth graders, and we try to make sure that we are putting a variety of books that are of interest to kids, and then we also have always tried in the past to make sure we are offering a variety of different diverse views and diverse authors. And but through the last couple of years, of course, you know, as we've begun our EDI work, we've been paying attention even more. Well, we audited our book lists back through 2017, and we were very pleasantly surprised to see that our lists were already about forty-sixty for forty percent diverse authors and diverse characters, and sixty percent non-diverse, and then of that sixty percent, you're talking about, about half of that is actually just animals and people, too, depending on the grade, because that's always very definitely appropriate when you have picture books and first grade books, and there are grade books, you have a lot of animals, and so our fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth was at forty-sixty, and that's from 2017 through 2022. So we upped that goal to fifty-fifty for this year, and so I believe we're still crunching those numbers now. We did that, and so that's what we are doing from the future on. So we were very happy with that, making sure that we are putting out book lists that are, you know, appealing to a wide variety of the Downers Grove community. We also audited our story collection. Our story collection are books that we actually do not circulate, they're in the back of the workroom, we use them for storytime, they tend to be a go-to spot for staff to pull from. And so that was one of our goals immediately when we started doing EDI work, was like, we need to make sure that what we're pulling is representative of our community. Well, about sixty percent of those books are about animals or things, which, again, is developmentally appropriate and is, you know, to be expected with the preschool crowd. And then about forty percent of it is people. Of the ones that are people, forty-two percent of them have diverse characters in them, in depictions of people, though, you know, that's okay. The one area that we do really need to work on is that only about seven percent of the authors of these books are diverse authors. So we made our goal for the 2023 year to reset it to at least twenty-five percent, if not more, we thought that was a good goal to start with, and then eventually we want to move that higher each year with our budgeting and buying for that book. So that does mean actually taking a really close look at that collection and seeing what are we using, what are we not using, that type of stuff, because we really want to make sure that those first books that our librarians and our staff members pull for them are gonna be, you know, of a, useful to us also as staff members, but just gonna, you know, kind of represent a diverse group of people, so really excited about that. We are starting our picture book audit next later this summer, which is gonna segue into another thing I'm gonna talk about in just a second, but if anybody has questions about what I've said so far, I'm not talking kind of fast, sorry, I'm a little nervous, so. So part of the reason we're doing our audit of our picture books is we're actually having a full inventory of our picture books this summer alone with our, in fact, this summer, it's gonna be longer than this summer, as well as some collection changes. Many probably know that we have our picture book section, and then we have our picture book favorite section, which are browsable categories of picture books. We've been making some changes to those, making them more patron-friendly and more user-friendly, so one of our changes that we've already made was like changing our train tracks and construction to things that go because airplanes and boats weren't included in airplanes and boats, which would be important to kids who like things that go. So changing that, we adjusted our concept section, those are like your alphabet books, your books about shapes, your books about learning your numbers, that type of stuff. We made that into a larger collection that is easier for parents to read and find the books that they're looking for. Our, what we're gonna be working on in the summer is adjusting our character development and our growing up collection, which we're gonna move into a new section just called like Social Topics, because these are books like Baby, Baby Sister, but they're also feelings, and they're like How to Be Honest, and Life Skills, and Going to the Doctor for the First Time, all that type of stuff. We have those in the special areas because that's always requested by parents, but they aren't organized that well, they're not easy to find, so we are gonna be doing some renovation within that section so that everything's under social under social topics and you're going to be able to find those individual topics as well in there. But then with the audit, what we're doing is we are auditing our browsing topics because our browsing areas, these favorites are probably that are most heavily used. So we want to see what diversity of author and subject looks like in there to make sure that we can make those adjustments. And then we're doing the collection as a whole because I'm sure you probably saw strategic planning, children's picture books has like awesome circulation. And so we know we have the right size collection and people are finding it, but we just want to kind of make things even easier for parents and easier for staff when we are looking for things. The other change we're making to the collection this summer is that we are going to be moving our toddler books to shelving along the west wall. We have them along the north wall right now, which is fine. Toddler books should really it's a something, right? Sorry. Toddler books really should be at a lower height so that toddlers could actually self-select books. And that's part of the reason why we don't actually find sort of toddler books within storage, because that's a early literacy skill, kids should be able to feel free to pull the book up and, you know, do their books of the hardback books, do whatever toddlers need to do with the book, put it back and not a big deal if they're out of order, that type of thing. And so we're really excited to be able to get that back on low shelving along the wall near the baby and toddler section, which is going to allow us to open up more picture book shelving, including the rest of the bins we have. We're going to add some more browsing topics in there, including our holiday collection, which right now is only Halloween and then Christmas, Pons, and Hanukkah. We are going to expand our holiday collection to all of the books we have on holidays in the library so that we are holiday and just having two, three holidays, and it is not really a holiday collection. So we're expanding that because we get lots of questions for other holiday books as well. So that's going to take up some of our new opening spaces. So we have to find those books during our inventory and stuff, too. So we're really excited. So that's some of the stuff we have coming up. We're busy. We are busy and we are excited and we're really planning on having a great summer. So well, thank you. If you have any questions.
Wow.
I know. I'm tired of just reading about nothing. But we do have a clerk position open to everybody. Our clerk positions are great and anybody can apply, but they are pretty great for like high schoolers or college kids because they're not allowed hours a week and you get to work with the kids, which is lots of fun. And we have two of them open because we have two kids going to college in the fall. So just going to put that out there, be going if you have some part-time job, have them apply. Thank you.
Okay, so we are back to our agenda item number eight, new business, Illinois Non-Resident Library Card Program.
All right. This is one of our annual have-tos. We opt this board has for as long as I think any of us can remember opted into selling non-resident fee cards. This is for households that are not part of the village of Downers Grove, but are part of our local school district that allows these folks to be able to buy a card annually to get library service. And so there are statutorily two different methods of calculating that fee. We have used the general mathematical formula for many years, and that fee is actually going down by a dollar to two hundred and ninety-one dollars from two hundred and ninety-two dollars. So we're looking for a motion to approve that, and that begins August first and goes through July thirty-first of next year. And that allows us to get that information out to our cardholders, our non-resident cardholders, and the circulation staff to make the change.
I just have a question since I have encountered this. For the formula that we're using, is that the formula that would make it less expensive or does it come out the same way for the families that are involved?
It generally comes out about the same for families that are involved on average. This really averages it out for households. The only other method is the tax bill method, and that requires that the non-resident either bring in their tax bill or their lease. And then you and then the clerk who is doing the non-resident fee card has to go through and do the whole calculation to figure to apply our tax rate for the year to their individual situation and do all the math and then decide what their fee is going to be. So you got two choices, and we choose the one that has less math for the for the person sitting at the desk and also less hassle for the person coming in who wants to get a card.
Tax bill.
Who, you know, now I have to go bring my tax bill back with me.
And that's not not really private information technically, but it feels ducky asking people to bring their tax bill or their their lease agreement.
And then if somebody doesn't have an actual written lease.
I'd be happy to move that we continue the program as recommended by the staff.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just I want to say I started looking at these different equations and I was like, because I was curious about what what the other one would look like. And yeah, besides the fact that it would take, you know, lots of extra time to do computation and require the person to bring in, I did my own, like I plugged in my own. Really close to where and I would say, you know, we're probably not as, you know, there are probably lots of books that are higher value than mine. So I think, you know, it's interesting to kind of just see like what it means for the, you know, for the income. So my question was, how many people take advantage of this over the course of any given year? Or is it like dozens, hundreds?
We generally bring in about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a year on that, so maybe a hundred families.
All right, so you have a motion on the floor to approve the Illinois Non-Resident Library Card Program. One second, second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Go ahead and do roll call on this issue.
Trustee George.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kritia.
Yes.
Trustees Leta.
Yes.
President Kagan.
Yes.
Approved the Illinois Non-Resident Library Card Program. Item number B, fiscal year 2024 salary schedule.
All right. So as those of you who have been with us for a while know, we did a major overhaul of our salary structure back in twenty nineteen, and we used HR Source, which is a nonprofit HR association here in and it's actually located here in Downers Grove, but it's a statewide association. And they do HR consulting as well. So they worked with us on a full market analysis. So we redid our entire salary structure. The report is there in the board packet if you want to take a look at it on on our website, on the board member page, the same place you find the recordings for these. So that process begins with updated job descriptions for every job in the library. So that was our big project at the end of two thousand twenty-two was updating all of those job descriptions. We then send those off to the consultant. They match those job descriptions to job summaries in various surveys. There are surveys that are libraries only, that are Illinois libraries. We do Chicago Metro Market there and several others. They're all listed in the report. So some of them are libraries, some of them are nonprofits, some of them are the for-profit areas so that particularly for jobs that are not just library, we are looking at the job market for those job seekers, for things like HR or our business office assistant. You know, those are the kinds of things that that we just map. So they match those with the different jobs. They take all that survey data, they come up with an average of what you should expect to pay for this particular job in this year. And then they slot those all together. There are many tables in this, so go ahead and have a look. So each of so that average blended average for each job becomes the midpoint for that pay grade, and it is extended up and down. So the midpoint minus twenty percent becomes the minimum we would pay for that job, and the midpoint plus twenty percent becomes the maximum we would pay for that particular job. It's we are at eleven point four percent between pay grades. That is determined by HR Source. And this data is trended forward for implementation in January of two thousand twenty-four. As you know, our budget year is the calendar year, so we are looking at this for implementation in two thousand twenty-four. It comes before you at this point so that we can use this as we're preparing the budget for two thousand twenty-four. As in June, we will have the first preliminary draft of the budget. So doing this in May allows us to work with the new salary schedule for determining what what employees will be making in two thousand twenty-four. Does anyone have any questions about the report?
So this report specifically has a plan, it looks like, to go all the way through two thousand twenty-seven, correct?
Yes.
With like kind of goal adjustments by here.
And that is HR Source's recommendation. They did the same for us when we did it in two thousand nineteen, where basically about three to four years is the life of a re-benchmarking. So this salary structure is very, it looks very different than the one that we had before. So for the next three years, we will simply adjust those pay grades annually according to their cost of living increases. And then in four to five years, we'll do this whole thing again to make sure that we're keeping up with the market. And it was it was quite an interesting exercise. You will see that we had positions that their pay rate, the midpoint decreased by as much as three point five percent, which was very surprising to us, but also pay that increased by as much as thirteen point five percent.
Just to comment a little history. The goal of this is to attract and retain good team members for the library. And before this process was begun back in nineteen?
Yes.
We used to look at other libraries in the area and compare notes and so forth. But this is much better because many of our positions, when we're recruiting, we're recruiting not just from library people, but from people in other industries because the the job descriptions are similar. And that's what that's one of the things this does. And it's also this is also a much more scientific look, and I think it's been very successful. Certainly, it's something I urge us to continue.
May I have your attention, please? A library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please, I don't see wish to check out. We're the first full service announcement this time. Again, the library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Thank you.
I really appreciate how comprehensive this all was. It's really impressive, kind of all, you know, kind of reading through some of the percentage increases and decreases and where where there are gaps and things. I was curious, I'm each year we make the recommendation that the library should focus on, because of looking at the comp ratio, which is the percentage against market, to say, because of course some people are going to be over, because they've been here forever or that maybe they are, because they came in less experienced than than whatever. So is that going to be the is that like H is that like Caitlin?
Yes, yes, that's that's what we do at the administration level.
I wasn't sure if that was also HR Source going to kind of go through that, because that seems like a really big job.
As a matter of fact, Scott just updated our entire personnel spreadsheet that we use to control that we use to figure out all those raises. And there's there are columns for last year's comp ratio, this year's comp ratio, so that you can really see how that's changing over time.
Well, I'm also thinking about, maybe it's just done as part of our EDI audit a few years ago, but like how that, you know, what these changes mean in terms of pay equity.
Oh, absolutely. And that is something you may recall that last year, when we did the personnel, when we made some some the recommendations for salaries, we did include some internal equity adjustments at that time. And we do that every year. We take a look, you know, it's me and my scatter plot graphs that look at longevity versus where they are in the pay so that you can kind of look at at that arc and see if somebody's like out of whack. Yeah, you're looking for outliers.
I will really to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four salary schedules presented. Second. We have a motion in the second to approve the salary schedule as presented. See, we're welcome.
Sure. Trustee. Trustee George.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kritia.
Yes.
Trustees Leta.
Yes.
President Kagan.
Yes.
All right, we've approved the salary schedule as presented. Unfinished item nine, unfinished business to bylaws update.
We had our committee of the whole meeting, which some of you saw, where we went through the draft bylaws that that we had been working on in small teams for a couple of months. And after the last board meeting, as the point person on, I went back and incorporated the recommendations that came from the other other trustees and some from staff also. That is what's posted with tonight's meeting notice and the other documents, where we're required to post those things before, you know, before we take a vote on it. So presumably, unless someone else has something else that just, you know, come up in the last couple of days, we'll be ready to vote on the new bylaws next month.
And those again are in the board packet that is posted on the website with the meeting recordings, et cetera.
I did want to add, Trustee Nieberg was unable to make the meeting tonight, but he also wanted to just pass on his feedback that was, quote, this looks great and I'm aligned with the changes you've made. And like him, thank you, Marty, so much for taking, you know, the lead on this really dryness to a nice streamlined document.
Yeah, I just I want to thank Marty for doing all the heavy lifting on this because there were, there was a lot of heavy lifting, I guess, and thank you for that.
The only question that came up recently that we had really had a public discussion on is why it changed the numbering system. The old numbering system was tied into some library documents. And by creating our own system, we're able to, first of all, make it a little easier to find stuff and we were able to cut it down. I don't remember how long the how many pages the original bylaws were, but I think I've got it down to like three or four.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that was so in the event that the library documents that were at some point, for some reason, cross-referenced have to change, we don't have to go back in and change the bylaws. So we're starting fresh with our own thing that's that's been amicably uncoupled from the library documents.
Consciously.
So where are we right now?
So if there are no major, there are no changes, then this draft will go before the board for a vote in June.
I had a couple of technical changes, quote unquote, but they're not philosophical changes.
That's fine, but we can do technical changes. You talk about, you know, little grammar things, spelling things, stuff like that or numbering.
Typo.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
And I can.
Yeah, we'll make sure that that any typos, if you send those or just hand them off, we will make sure that those changes are made and that is into the draft, the final draft for June.
Yeah, Dave, if you want to just give them to me, I can.
One slightly philosophical one, when we were discussing the when we were in strategic planning session last week, whenever that was, my mind is still mushy from that, but although I thought that was a bit too. My mind is still mushy from that, but although I thought that was, they were two wonderful sessions. There was some discussion in there about, is it a purpose or is it a mission? And I don't know whether we resolved that, but we refer to a purpose in these bylaws. I think that would be a technical change.
That would be a technical change. And incidentally, one of the things that I put in these new line ball bylaws is a way for us to make technical changes without going through that whole advanced posting thing that takes two or three months to change a spelling thing or a small word or something like that. So once these are passed, those kind of changes will be easy to adjust without it being as formal. Thank you all very much. Appreciate all your help.
Share these internally then.
So I guess we will let them, let them sit for now. And if there are any technical tweaks to be made in the meantime, you can get them to me or Jen or Julie, doesn't matter really at this point.
They'll just all go.
And thank you also to Jen for adding the citations at the end of it, the list of the statutes and all that. Appreciate your help on that.
Okay, all right, wonderful. So those should be ready to go for a vote next month. Item 10 is the library.
You all have my written report in the board packet. A lot of this past month was all about strategic planning. And we had a wonderful retreat. Twenty-six of us got together two nights in a row. And it was, it was a long day for everyone, but we did really great work. And we cannot wait to see what Rethinking Libraries, our strategic planning consultant, comes back with as a draft plan. They just, it was a phenomenal process. And the findings book, all of the things that they, they put together, all of the background information. We had a hundred, over 140 people participate in our focus groups. We had over 2,000 people answer our survey. So...
And they had said that 380-something was going to be the statistical significant break point.
Yes.
Our survey made 2,000, so.
Boo hoo to Downers Grove. They said it was one of the best responses that they've had. And the last time they saw over 2,000 was in a community that was more than twice our size. So that was amazing. And again, 26 people in the room, so just a lot of folks giving their input. And we, and a lot of interesting things rose to the top, some unexpected ones. So we will be looking for a draft, maybe in June, July. We'll see how all that shakes out. We, I do, I did want to thank our group that did the Memorial Day window painting. They did a lovely job. Unfortunately, some of their best artwork kind of got, got hidden because somebody did a really great purple heart, but it's under the leaves along Curtis Street. So if you get a chance, go and glance before it goes away on the 31st. And it's a lot more text than we normally have in our, in our window paintings. But it was very, they did a really great job. They did a great job on the American flag itself, so kudos to them. We will be having the EQDG. We'll be doing the pride window painting throughout the downtown. And the library participates in that. And then again, in October, the Rotary Club of Downers Grove does the Halloween window painting throughout the downtown. So this was the first time the gentleman approached us as an individual, did not tell us who else was helping. But it turned out great, and we're working on some procedures should we get any additional questions in the future. Oh, and someone had asked about the investigation Caitlin updated the board earlier. The investigation, the third-party investigation of a personnel matter is an investigation and that is ongoing. And they just interviewed a bunch of staff this past week, so.
That's all I have. Right. All right, item number 11 is trustee comments and requests for information.
Sorry, sorry, I don't have any requests for information, but I do have some, some comments, I think, of general interest. Number one, the strategic planning retreat. Was that last week? It was so thorough and so mind-boggling. Quite when it was, I remember almost everything that happened in it. And it was just an amazing team that was assembled by the consultant and staff, including people from a number of organizations and different segments of our community. The mayor spent two full nights with us and the village manager and people from the foundation, people from the school districts, as well as staff and board members. It was just an amazing group of people. I, I've lived in Downers Grove all my life. I don't think I've ever sat in a room with that quality of people all in one place, especially for summer hours. So that was outstanding. The kids' room presentation tonight was just mind-boggling. It's, you know, you just look at the kids' room, and there's books and kids and staff, and you just think that it's all just happening. But now you get a feel for what really goes on in that room and how much creativity goes on in the way of the staffing. I want to highlight the fact that June 1st, we have an amazing exhibit that's going to be located in the library. It's called the Legacy Wall. If you don't know what that is, you can Google it. But it's an amazing exhibition that is on tour around the United States. And this is the only place it's going to be for the month of June in the entire Chicago area. And so there are people, you may see buses pulling up of people. Now, I can, it's literally. And it opens June 1st. I also want, personal thing a little bit, there's an exchange, sort of a sister city exchange between the District 99 High School's music departments and a city similar, very like Downers Grove, which is a suburb of Stuttgart in Germany. And every two years, a group from one of the sister cities visits the other sister city. And the first week of June, a group of 100 people, mostly kids, from their high school will come to Downers Grove to spend almost a week in our community. They stay in the homes of music students in Downers Grove. They, they visit the local community and the area. They go to Chicago and take the architectural boat tour, and of course go up to Willis Tower and so on. But they...
The library is now closed. We will reopen tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. Have a good evening.
Fourth of June, fourth or sixth, or whatever it is of that week, I got tapped by the mayor and the school district to host a tour of downtown Downers Grove. And I don't have much time. It's going to start over in Fischel Park and go past some high points in Downers Grove quickly and end up at the Tivoli Theater for a tour of that building. And then they're going to spend some time there. And then they're going to have a couple of hours free to wander in downtown Downers Grove. And boy, I can't give them a tour of the, on the formal part of it of the library, but if you can believe, I'm going to point it out and tell them, "Get over there and spend some time. Compare our library to the one in Stuttgart, or in their suburb." Betteckheim Bisigien is the name of their community. And it's, it's just a joy. The mayor of that town in Germany is coming with them and is being picked up at the airport by Bob Barnett from Downers Grove. And so it's, it's just a wonderful exchange opportunity.
I'm not a trustee, but I just really quit off with that. I did that, and I went to Germany and the exchange. And it's a fantastic program. And if they do end up performing here, I highly suggest everyone. They usually perform at Tivoli. I don't know if they're doing that this week.
There are a couple of performances. There'll be a short performance that same Monday evening in Fischel Park in the, in the pavilion at Fischel Park. But it's fairly short because there's some formalities going on there. But they are going to give about a 30-minute concert.
Highly recommend it. They are fantastic.
And then there's, there's another concert later in the week. Soften that, I think, soften that.
I'll just echo what Dave said about the strategic planning retreats and all the focus groups, all the work. I really appreciate Jen especially for putting all this stuff together. It's pretty amazing, all the stuff that went on and has been going on. And they continue to go on for the next little while to bring us to a place where we can do strategic planning. One thing that Allison's presentation, I sure invited you, that came up during the session was the strength of the partnerships that the library has with school districts and community partners and, you know, the daycares and all these different businesses. It's something that we talk about a lot here in the board, and I don't know if everyone in the community knows about. And it's something that really filled with a strong feeling as we talked about the strengths of the library, what to build on for the strategic planning. So I just, I kind of contributed that, that memory of just last week, thinking it was in those things. And I just wanted to say thank you for arranging all that stuff and I'm excited to see what comes out of it.
One last comment. Maybe kids could get into this package. This is always having growth.
I got mine, it's been sitting at home. What a bunch of situals.
There's nothing like a toddler's determination. That would tear you whole. Well, I have literally the same comments that both of you had. So same thing, thank you, Allison, for highlighting the kids. I mean, again, like even having children go through there for so many years, I, you really don't, you take for granted the amount of foresight it takes to plan out, you know, who's that go and what's in the toddler's reach and, you know, all of that. So thank you for all of that work. And the audit's very interesting. It's great to see that just kind of like the forefront of, you know, what's kind of driving the next set of books that come into the library. And excited also, like for Natalie, to have volunteer kids now. And so that's exciting. And yes, thank you to Jen and Julie and Caitlin and everyone at the library for a really smooth and wonderful strategic planning process. Our consultants, Rethinking, did a phenomenal job. And it was really great to get all the input from all the community leaders and everybody. I think the two big takeaways were the value of the staff at the library, which, you know, goes back to our enthusiasm over the salary schedule as well as the partnerships. And so, you know, the kids' room obviously was a huge partnership, but, you know, partnering with the foundation to have social interns to help us with those that are in need in our community, partnering even with the department, partnering with organizations like Hope's Front Door and People's Resource Center. You know, like the library has a wonderful working relationship. I think that's really important to point out. So the library is constantly working to help solve community issues. It's not something that's being more, more brushed to the side or not taken very seriously.
I apologize, I omitted one thing about, I mentioned the legacy wall, and you're mentioning partnerships with community organizations. That's another example of a partnership with a community organization. In this case, it's Equality Downers Grove, as well as a number of other sponsors in the community that are, that are funding this exhibit. And I did want to mention that the library is not funding that exhibit. Something close to $10,000 has been raised in the community for this exhibition, but the library is not spending any tax dollars on the project.
The other thing that came out of the strategic planning, if we go back a minute, I think it's something that we all knew, knew, but issues that come up like public access to the library, the social services gaps, those kind of things, it obviously came up in the strategic plan, but it also became apparent in listening to these consultants who've worked all over the country and even in a couple of other countries with libraries. We knew it, but boy, it is not unique to us. This is something that, that not just public libraries, but public entities in general are dealing with all of these things. So I appreciated the, the, I think all of us probably did, the idea that more community involvement and the solutions and pressure on other government bodies as well. We're not trying to blow it off. We're just saying we have some restrictions on what we can do. So if somebody comes up with some great stuff, it will, it will spread far wide beyond Downers.
Amen.
Sophia, can I say something? Yeah. I, I feel like everyone thanked Allison and I didn't. Allison, thank you. And I want to say, I appreciate the intentionality between the audit and the impact that it has on children to see little look like them and for children who don't look like them to see kids who are other kids who don't look like them. It's, it's really, really powerful, and we appreciate it as a board and as a parent. I appreciate it as well. Not that my kids are in the toddler community more, but.
It's all there at grade school.
Yeah. I, but I'm saying it's, it's appreciated and it's good. And I know it's really, really powerful to do audits. Thank you. And thank you, Jen and Julie, for all the research. It was very long, but, but rewarding. Looking good at the time.
Wonderful. With that note, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 9:08 p.m. Thank you all for my...